At this time, I'm gonna call the April 22nd Banks County Board of Commissioners FY26 Budget Work Session Order. Do I have approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion by Danny, second. My Chris to approve the agenda, Keith?
Uh.
Aye.
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 First up is the 26 budget. At 2:00, we will be stopping for executive session for potential litigation. But, uh, turn it over to Randy Failure.
Yeah, we, uh, what, you, each of us have one of these lists right here. The ones highlighted in yellow is the ones we're gonna try to get through today. And we're just gonna start at the top of the list. Technology was gonna be at 10:00, but evidently they're not gonna, they're not gonna be able to make it. So we'll just start with contingency and just work our way down. And we'll get to each department, try to get everybody in this building, for sure, taken care of, plus some other smaller departments, as you see highlighted here. But we can start with the contingency fund, which we normally keep $100,000 in there if you wanna maintain that level. It's, it seemed that we've never gone over, but we, you know, we've gotten fairly close, but, uh, it's a good idea to have that additional funds available for various situations.
Looks like we're $48,000 last year, actual, and we're, we're at 44 February this year.
Yeah. We're already at 44.
Have we used a lot more than that, or?
We have not.
Okay.
We have not. So we should, we should get through the entire year without going over it again.
Okay. Y'all good with that?
I'd rather be.
Now, we're at the, the next, next up is the Commissioner's account. I'm not sure that you, or any particular department at this time that you would want to get involved with the payroll, the, uh, the benefits, because we really don't know at this time how much the health insurance is gonna be, in any case. But by the time we get through to departments and the expenses, we probably should have a good idea of how much the health insurance is gonna cost and where we're at. So we can work our way on down to professional fees, if you like, on page two, which we, we keep in there. We've had $1,500. We, we, we've got it down to $1,000 this year, if you wanna maintain that.
I've got a couple notes on that first page of the Commissioner's, and not really notes, just some, get some clarification on.
Okay.
The overtime, we've got $1,000 there for overtime.
The reason we had, we put in it, we've never really kind of gotten to that point, but right now, we were there already with, uh, the extra time it's taken us to get things processed. It's usually in, in our department, you know, with, uh, with one individual that's worked over to get, uh, different AP done, difference, which you know, Renee, which is working over to try to keep us up to date with.
Yep. And then that professional, what would we be using that for?
That's anything that you may, that the Commissioners may have to inquire for outsides, some type of outside services.
Okay.
We didn't use it the previous year, we haven't used it yet. You may not even wanna keep it in there.
Yeah, I think ACCG and GMRC, I mean, those, those two agencies can...
They cover us.
And they're free.
Yeah. So we got...
And then, if we need anything more heavy duty than that, we'll go to the lawyer, and we've got a line item for that, so.
We'll just take it out, can't we?
Yeah, I'd rather knock that one out.
Okay, we can zero that out. The audit fees, uh...
So we still need the professional to be left in there?
No, we're taking the professional out.
No, we're cleaning it out.
And then audit fees, that 87 will cover the entire countywide required audit.
Well, supposedly, unless we have a single audit. Now, that could be another $10,000. More than likely, we, we may have one, but right now, they said it, when I asked somebody, it would be 87,000. It's gonna be, it's gonna be less than 100, probably.
Okay, and does that equal everything we pulled out of the other departments?
That's correct.
Okay. We used to have audit fees kind of scattered through the different departments, but since that's really a function we're supposed to do, it's cleaner and simpler just to have it in our budget as one, one price.
Yeah, it's, it'd be much easier to keep it under this, under this department and try to spread it throughout some of the other departments. Transit, you're limited to anyway, the state of Georgia's gonna allow so much, and when you try to prorate it across, across the board, it just doesn't seem to work out that way. And then, at least here, you can see what it's costing you, the total amount as a whole, what it's costing the county. The dues and fees, you can see on the notice there, those are, that's not gonna change much, that's the Georgia Mountain Regional, uh, and ACCG pension, it's just, it's just dues and fees that you have each year. I don't know how you can adjust that any.
On the vehicles and equipment, Randy, we've got $250 in there, is that enough? I mean, what can we do with that?
We don't have many vehicles.
But, I mean, you...
Well, you got the, you got the escape, if you need the oil change or...
Yeah.
Need a tire, need to replace a tire or something, that's just a minimum out to take care of that one vehicle.
Yeah. Might better put a thousand, we took out of that other back end.
We, we can look at it, see if it's gonna need tires soon.
Let me put a question mark by that.
Yep. It's a big department, have one little B.O.S.U.V., ain't it?
And $250, just, it just won't get much of it anymore.
Well, you can see that the previous year, we, we, we spent $1,975. We're already at 438.
I'm thinking 500's gonna be the bottom dollar there, but...
500, that might look a little bad. I think, I was thinking 500 as well.
We'll check it, see if it looks like it needs a tire.
You gonna do a minimum out of 500?
Tire, that's the main tire.
Y'all got any other questions on that sheet? Everything else is about the same, I said.
Yeah.
General supplies and materials is up, but it's up to match what's actually been spent. Looks like it was, been under budgeted for a couple of years.
Office and equipment lease is up also. No, it's...
No, it's down 200, yeah.
It's down, it's down, I see, I see.
Telephone's same, gasoline's the same.
We don't really know that, but...
Advertising.
What's that advertising?
Yeah, advertising's come down a little bit, that's for all your public notices and stuff like that, and it's down 1,000. Anything else?
Looks good to me.
Looks good. We'll go back and, you want, will we remove the professional fees down to zero, we'll up the vehicle and equipment to $500, and the rest remains the same.
Mm-huh.
And since Thomas is here now, we can go back, we can look at technology, since he's here, if you want to.
What page is technology in the budget book?
Uh, it's on page seven.
Seven?
Seven. If you, if you look at page seven, you see, you can see that we've got the technology, the top line item includes also our software, our accounting software. So we, you can, we, we're actually at $110,000 now. I don't expect to go over that this fiscal year, but it, that's why I bumped it up a little bit to 120, 'cause everything, all of our programs have gone in cost.
Are we still paying for the Smart Fusion, is that a yearly expense?
It, it is.
How much is it?
Probably close to $80,000, somewhere in the 70s, $80,000.
We're, we're paying that every year?
That's right, that's correct.
Are we utilizing it enough to justify that, or?
Well, we're not only using it for payroll, but we use it for planning, I mean, the planning and zoning, we use it for AP, we use it for, it's accounting software.
Okay, so we are using a...
Public utilities, the same way, yeah, it's, it's heavily used in this building.
Okay.
And then the technic, technological support is basically for these guys here, unless the, unless he thinks we need to, to up, we need to add anything to the technical line item.
So basically, 80 of it's tied up in software, so we've got 40 to spare in...
Yes.
There's, there's some stuff we'd like to upgrade. I've even talked to Becky, she's, her server's several years old, she is wanting to look at some options to upgrade that server. I think it was put in like 2008, and the dates that we're binding on that. So I don't really have a cost, she's getting some stuff on that. We're probably, you know, when we upgrade the mail server, we'll probably have to upgrade people's Microsoft Outlook and Word platform. So I haven't really got those numbers yet. We're, we're kinda like finding out a lot of stuff here needs to be upgraded, we haven't really got like a full number.
Is the, the new email platform, is that included in this technical line item? That'll come out of somewhere else.
Any, anything extra that Thomas says we, they need, is either gonna be added to the technical line item, or it would be taken out of our capital counter reserve fund.
Okay. The email platform, that's gonna be a monthly expense, we probably didn't have that built into the budget.
Yeah, we probably, we'd need to put that in the budget.
Yep.
How much is it?
I believe it was right around 1,300, but we've added more email to our people.
Yes, 1,500 or less a month.
It, it's roughly $10 per email.
Yeah.
I think we're up to 155. It's a little less than that.
So that, I mean, really, that gets us down to about $20,000 left to make necessary upgrades. We, can we get out of the weeds for $20,000, or?
I, I'm not sure, I can't give you enough on that yet.
Is that close?
Um...
I know we could spend a lot more than that, but I wanna, I wanna fix our immediate vulnerabilities, but...
Um, yeah, I know when, uh, July, the firewall comes up, and that's probably gonna be like another five, around there. We're kinda looking at some internet options, I know you and I have talked about that.
Mm-huh, that could save some money.
Yes, sir. And then, you know, we, we got that other stuff the other day, that, you know, that potentially cuts some costs to some of these other buildings.
I'm, I just, I feel like knowing what we know now about our system, we probably need to put a little more in that technical line item.
Yeah, you would get better service out of that, you know, not though, too.
Now, it's a big issue, is this included or not social and, um, all of the software for social media?
For, as, servers, can we not take, not this one? Yeah, probably does, yes, yes, but... Now, we're definitely gonna have for that email service, if we have 155, you know, that's gonna easily be 18,600 bucks, we're gonna have to add to this, just for that. As you said, it's about 10 bucks a person, right?
It, it's...
Somewhere in that neighborhood, so that's gonna be 18,600 right there, or $19,000.
That's right. And I think what we're landing on is that 120's probably gonna be light.
Probably so, on that, I mean, we just, we haven't really got into everything right now.
Yeah, we've been fixing immediate problems.
Yes, sir, we, we've got four things we're working on, is, uh, the email server is one, the server at the courthouse, we're in the process of replacing it, and then a couple other issues here that we're, you know, Wi-Fi was one of those issues we've got resolved. So we're, we've been working on those.
I, I feel like that 120's been eat up in this two-minute conversation we've got.
What do you want, man?
I think, I think 20 would be bare bones, just 'cause, I mean, there's some hardware stuff we're gonna have to have this year.
Yes, sir, you know, the, the Windows 10 goes away, and some of these computers are not gonna meet that. So we're gonna go around and find out which ones, you know, will not meet that, that goal of grades of 11, just 11. We're probably gonna have to replace several computers.
And I hate, I hate to inflate that, but also, we need a good idea of what we're gonna have to spend, so...
I wouldn't put any less than $160,000 in there right now, and I would think about that. We're gonna have to go replace some computers and other hardware, um...
Servers, oh.
I think right now, we'd be pretty good on the servers, we got two new servers, one for G.I.S., one for Windchow. So we're gonna be okay on those. The, the tag office, you know, whatever Ms. Becky finds that works good for her, we, you know, we don't really have any numbers on that yet as well.
So we really won't know until they get through.
Analyze and everything.
But, I mean, we gotta have money, but...
Yeah, it's gotta be...
But I know it, but I don't, I mean, today, we don't know...
Yeah, we don't, we don't have a hard number today.
In two or three weeks before we do the final, we'll know more.
But we, we might have a little better idea before we...
Right.
What is time, what is time frame when you find out what the other department will need?
We, we can go around, we can start working on that, I mean, when do you guys need those numbers, in, uh, yesterday?
Sooner the better, but...
Today would've been a fine day. Just kidding.
But I say, we've got, we got a little time to make some adjustments from that, when we find out what we need before we make a decision.
We should have it in three weeks, anyway, correct?
Yes, sir, we can do it.
Okay, let's just hold off on that, and then come back three weeks when he has the numbers up and...
We can look at it more. We'll try to keep it as low as possible, I understand, you know, not trying to...
Yeah, we, we don't wanna make any vanity upgrades, we just need basic functionality, so...
Is any of this stuff an emergency that we've got to have right now?
Um, you know, the email was, but we're already switching that over, that was voted on last, last session, so we've got that, we're cutting over Thursday, so that takes one, one thing out. The other server, we, we had that right there voted on, we've already got the parts, we actually have a server with us today, we're gonna start putting that in, so that's two of the major things that we have issues.
Mm-huh.
So the ma, some major...
We, we got some of the emergencies handled already, so...
Right. So, like Becky's computer that you speak of, does that have to be replaced this year?
It, sure, that, that server is, I mean, it's 2008, so that's, we're knocking on way close to 20 years on that, and that...
But will she get 21?
Coming in. I, I really would like for her to go to something like cloud-based, maybe, that way there's not like a huge cost. It is, it does cost a little bit more after, you know, several years, but you, you don't have to, uh...
It's operating expense instead of capital expense.
Exactly. You don't have to deal with backups, you don't have to deal with a piece of hardware here, you don't have to deal with any upgrades, it's all...
Don't have to worry about the air conditioner going out.
Does the same thing to, with the one that she's wanting, when you were talking about, would that do the same thing with what she's asking for, and, but cheaper?
Well, you know, she's got several options she can go with, I mean, I, I don't know what's gonna work best for her, that's kinda her department there, but, you know, there's, there's other counties that we've, that we've worked with, and, you know, we kinda showed her what they offer, and she's still like going through, looking at what's the best option. But we started talking about that a couple weeks ago, the first day.
We'll have a better idea on that in a couple weeks.
So you're looking at, with maintaining the email right now, you're looking at probably $140,000 plus whatever he comes up with.
That's what I've got wrote down as a minimum, is 140.
140, until you come back with us listening.
That's what I got on there.
Something else we may need.
Yes, sir, we'll, we'll go around to like the different departments. No, every time we go to the department, everybody's got a wish list.
Yeah.
We've been trying...
We don't want wish lists, we won't need lists.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to like, you know, evaluate what, what is the need and what we want.
Mm-huh.
Thank you for that.
Mm-huh.
They will wish you their best, I promise you.
All right, y'all got any other questions?
No.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just put in a 140 at this time with a question mark, and we'll make a decision on that after, after you get through with some of the things you clear up. I appreciate it.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. So you're putting in 140 at the one...
140. 140's a gift, we know, but he's liable to come back with a little bit more, with, with what's over with. You comfortable with that?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, well, Gina cannot come with elections until 1:15 today, so we'll, we'll, we'll pass over hers, and we just got through with technology, and then we've got human resources coming up, Arlene, if you're ready. You ready?
Good deal, good deal.
Little paper we own here, Arlene.
Page eight.
I'd like to start off by reduce, one line, right off that, on the clerks, uh, when I went back and looked to see when my H.R. generalist was gonna get her certified human resources certificate, I thought it was going to be, uh, November next year, but it's, or June next year, but it's not, so we can reduce that by $1,200.
Which one?
That is the second line item, clerks.
Reduce it to $1,200?
No, by 12, so 47,695.
Reduce it by 1,200, because once, uh, she receives her certificate, her certified human resources, she gets $1,200 pay increase, but she's not gonna get it in this budget year. I thought she was, but when we looked back at her classes, she's, uh, she's not gonna get it until beginning of the next budget year.
So the clerk's 48 is going to 47?
47,695.
Yeah.
All right, which other one you want to reduce?
The next line item on the retirement contributions, we've got 2,000, but Randy and I set in, now this is the pension plan that was frozen years ago, and this is a, uh, contribution we have to make based on their calculations of what it takes to maintain that account and other calculations. Based on what we went over, they said it's gonna be an increase, and they said in order to maintain it, that the minimum was gonna be $3,900, you remember that?
Yeah.
So we're gonna have to change that $2,000 and increase it to $3,900.
To what?
3,900.
You're going the wrong way, Arlene.
Yeah, that's...
I'm trying.
That looks like I had relatives that tried it.
I'm not true yet. All right, there's nothing else on that page, uh, everything else is, I'm hoping, I'm hoping workers' comp is gonna be reduced some, as you can see, uh, workers' comp, uh, we had to pay 470,000, and we were way over budget whenever I paid it in January.
Do we know when we got that spike?
Yes, I can explain a lot of it.
Okay.
A lot of it is what we had this enormous amount that we had budgeted for the wastewater plant...
Mm-huh.
That we didn't need, so, and that was already submitted.
Mm-huh.
Uh, there were some other departments that, that, I have to do an estimate every year what I think the payroll's gonna be, uh, so there were some departments that were overstated, there were some that were understated. We did get a refund back, I think it was $39,000, when, whenever they did the audit, so that back, part of that off which Randy took care of. So, based on what the payroll that we're looking at this year, uh, I think we'll be okay with 400,000.
All right, the unemployment insurance, I say we've only used $189 of that as of February, is that something that...
Uh, yes, and because we haven't had any unemployment claims, and that's based on, you get a percentage rate that you have to pay, based on the first $9,500 that every employee makes, and then after the $9,500, you don't have to pay. So it's hard to judge, but right now, we're like 0, 0.1, I mean, we're nothing. So that's what you're seeing, and always the first quarter is, is the high, so you see it was on $189. We probably won't use that 2,000, but if something happens...
You gotta have it there for a safety.
And they do their increases mid-year, so I'll get one in June, so I never know, I don't foresee one because I haven't had any claims. The claims I've had, I've been able to dispute them, and they were not granted unemployment, so... But it is in a pool, so you already did a pool, so...
Mm-huh.
I would recommend keeping it, but if you want, I mean, if you wanna cut it, I'd be okay cutting it $500, but I would be uncomfortable going anymore, just, just for...
What did we use that previous year?
Uh, we used a thousand, uh, in the last budget, uh, again, that's a, it's like this, it's one of those, if they change the rate, we're gonna have to pay it.
Mm-huh.
I don't foresee the rate being changed, other than going down.
Let's go 1,500 on that.
Okay.
Unemployment here?
Yeah, on unemployment.
That we just need tweaking some, I don't see it an enormous amount, I think just $3,000 will more than cover it, and, uh, because that's just hard for me to predict what, what's gonna cost and what's gonna come across.
They, that, that won't be done through the H.R. hotline, right?
No, that, that would be done through the attorney's office, yes.
So you're gonna cut, um, professionals to 2,000?
Kinda was wondering, 'cause I, I don't know how, 'cause we had discussed a little bit, me and Randy had, about keeping all the legal, like we're doing the audit, keeping all the legal in one lump sum, rather than dispersed through departments, too.
Right, being, being annexed.
And it'll still get, you know, kind of attributed, 'cause when they send the bills, they, they have which department the, the work was for, but...
Gives you, it gives you a better view of how much you're actually spending on bills instead of it being spread out all over 45 different parts.
Yeah.
The same way with audit, audit payments, so this is exactly what we paid this year, and this is what we need to be budgeting for.
It actually gives us more of a check balance on, on your end, 'cause you're looking at it as a whole.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
So is, so is...
What's on the debit sheet, too?
The manual, the only expense you foresee out of that professional line item, or?
It is, because, uh, I would eat this up really quickly if we didn't have the H.R. hotline.
Yeah.
As long as we were the ACCG, you don't foresee that going away, and that saves the county thousands of dollars a year, because most ever instance I have, if I have to ask a question, uh, pertains to H.R. things with personnel, that's free.
Yep.
And the good, our current attorneys, they're, they're actually the H.R. hotline attorneys, so, uh, I go to our source, it just doesn't cost us anything.
Yep.
Uh, I'm fine with reducing it down to 1,000, or taking it off if you're gonna put it over the others, it's your call.
Let's take it off and keep all the legal right there in one spot.
So you'll take all of that?
Yep.
Yep. Technical, what would that be? I say we spent a lot the year before, but I don't know what on.
Well, the year before is because, uh, the technical is upgrading my computer and Amanda's computer, and that went through my technical. Uh, this year, I thought, did you put that printer through this, or did you put it through?
The, the other, the department.
You put it to the, uh, the Minister's Department, you didn't put, uh... I don't see an upgrade that I have to have.
So we got two computers and a printer now?
My printer's fine, 'cause, you know, we, uh, I don't see using it.
Obviously, Thomas happened to replace it, didn't he?
I don't see anything having to be replaced.
Let's drop that just low enough to keep the line item.
About 500 dollars.
500 bucks.
That one, we've got it, 'cause at some point, you'll need another computer, but...
Am I doing better, Bo?
You are.
Your budget is a hole.
Man, lay, that's looking...
It's getting better.
If, if it wasn't for workers' comp, your budget would be down.
Mm-huh.
Well, you know?
The workers' comp from 2023 and '04 has almost doubled.
That's, uh, uh, and we discussed this in a meeting one night, it's, it's... I have two departments that generate all the claims.
Yeah.
And, uh, I can't control it. We put in every safe measure we can, I can't control the public safety side of it, I just can't.
All right, what about your travel?
The travel, that's, that's pretty, uh, the travel and education, both those are bare bones, uh, and you see we haven't used much this year, but we got a big conference coming up in June. I have two main conferences, June and November each year, and, uh, the last couple of years, they've been local, so I haven't had to, like Athens, we had Athens back, uh, in November, didn't have to pay anything except just a little bit of travel. But, uh, the one coming up in June, it is in Lake Lanier Islands, and because they're early meetings and consecutive, we will be staying down there, so that, uh, that's gonna we will be staying down there. So that, that's going to eat up some of the travels. You'll see this, this is going to deplete mostly. The next for our budget year, there'll be travel. One's going to be in downtown Atlanta, and the other one hasn't been set yet. I will know that more in June. But I pretty much eat this up every year between Amanda and myself. I go to maintain my certifications and keep my credits, and she's working towards her certified human resources. And their next step would be the advanced, which is required for keeping up with all, all the laws and everything. So...
Training is probably the best investment.
That's a good investment.
That you can make.
I agree 100%. Buy pens, and we still have to have notepads, so we still... And that's one item that gets cut every year. I just don't know how much more you can cut it.
Well, we're already at $869.
Yeah.
$1,200 is pretty conservative.
And I just made an order the other day, so I'm going to use most of it up.
Four more months to run.
All right. The next one, I just want to make a note that the telephone expense has not gone up, and that will be important later.
And that's for my cellphone.
Figure these telephones out.
That's my cellphone, right?
Yeah. And I, and I think Thomas is looking into that as well, some of these telephone and internet expenses.
Mm-hmm.
Internet technology.
Why do we have two line items for training here? Employee development. We got education and training, and we got development.
All right. This is, I changed the title of that. It was my formerly wellness. Formerly, it was, we created that line. I got a grant through ACCG when we went that short period time Blue Cross Blue Shield, and I earned a $2,000 wellness grant. And I then, whenever we left Blue Cross Blue Shield and went to another carrier, I no longer was eligible for that, and we were supposed to use it for wellness for the employees. Well, during, it was COVID, so we didn't get to use it. So board approved at that time for me to use that $2,000. For example, whenever we do the employee recognition, we do, did a Low Country Bowl, use that money for that. And I'm asking to maintain that, and we changed this to employee development and training. It's more to pull them together, train them. We're talking about changing our insurance. I want to use that to maybe do a hot dog cookout for them, have the EMTs here to do the blood pressures and things like that for the wellness. It's more employee development. It's to bring them together maybe one time a year and let the employees know that we appreciate what they're doing.
I just didn't know what to...
Feed them a hot dog, give them a hot cut.
Mm-hmm. And then employee assistance, what is that?
That's our EAP. That's, that is a program that we put, and it's managed by Northeast Georgia Health Systems, Lorwood. That's whenever an employee feels like they need to talk to a professional for a number of things, you know, whether it's personal, whatever, and that's, they're free to pick up the phone and call them. They charge me $26, and I think it's 26, either 26 or 27 per employee. I have to give them a report in the May, first of June, what the average number of employees were, and that's what they charge me. Originally, I started off with like $8,000 in there, because that's when we had all the departments together. I ran the numbers the other day, and it looks like it's going to run about $5,300 for this current budget year. So I'm good. We're reducing it down right now, as long as we don't add employees.
Why have, has there not been any usage this year?
It's only one time a year. I send them once a year.
So it hasn't come through yet?
And yes, we originally started off monthly, and so the director there, we got together and decided to just do an average for the year and do it one time a year. So I'll send him the invoice last of May, first of June. And then we'll pay that in this current year, but you, you won't see it here until the last, probably the last pay run.
So we're going to put that at 55?
I would feel comfortable at 55, as long as we maintain the number of employees we have currently.
Any other questions?
No. I mean, I just, the only thing that's something that's real hard right there was workers' comp.
Yeah.
It's up $210,360.
Nothing you can do about that.
And her budget's only up $51,363.
So as a recap on, on human resource, we're going to bring down the clerks to $47,695, retirement contributions to 3,900, the unemployment insurance to 1,500. The professionals, we're going to take out. Technical, we're going to reduce to $500, and also, we're going to reduce employee assistant program to $5,500.
Can I make a future request?
Maybe.
Not for this budget, but we're going to have to entertain your pay study. It'll be all right this budget year, but just FYI, one that's not been done since 2005. I tried to maintain it and keep it up, and I think I'm pretty close, but at some point, we're going to have to. Right now, with current estimates, it's going to be about $30,000 for me to complete pay study. But just keep in mind, when you have pay study, you can't have an increase in salaries. But that's something we're going to have to do in the future, but not for this first year. I just wanted to put that out there.
Got to get out of weeds first.
Yeah.
Bring the weed.
Look, she got us all happy, and then hit us with that right before she left.
That was my very last one.
We got the tax commissioner up next on page 10. Hey, Becky. You doing all right? Good deal. Looks like that, that top line item popped in there. We don't need that, that... Yeah. That, that pay scale adjustment there. But anyway, we'll, we'll work our way down. We're not, we're not going to kind of discuss any payroll at this time as usual, you know, until we get through the rest of the budget. And what we're going to do, which you're not aware of yet, we're going to take the audit fees out.
Okay.
Completely. We're going to have it in all together in one department and not spread it throughout the rest. So that's, that's why, if you look here, you'll see a zero. Now, you may see something pop in through after February here, because this is as of February 20th, something might come, come on through there.
Where's it, and I might have an older packet, the PEPSCO number.
Oh, oh, we got it. Well, we'll, we'll make, we'll make an adjustment for that for, that's, that's based on salary. So we'll make, I'll put a, I'll make sure, make a, put a, put a amount in there. Because it's not, it's, it's not going to disappear. It's going to be in there.
But it's probably going to run about that same 11.8, right around there.
I would, I would, I would say so. I would say so. It will, it will run close to the $12,000.
Yeah.
What about her audit fees? Is that...
That's getting pulled out.
That's going to be pulled out because all of us going into that one.
One umbrella under us. Yeah, the audit, the audit fees are going to be removed from all the departments.
And then same with the legal on the next page, and then the technical. I see we've spent 5:47 the year before, and we're only at 3:05 now. What are we doing with technical stuff there?
A couple of years ago, we had a power outage. A server went down for like two weeks.
Mm-hmm.
We have an old server. I think Thomas might have mentioned that to you in the budget previously. Old server, it does need to be replaced or upgraded. I'm not going to make a quick decision on doing that. I'm going to go to visit some other tax offices. There were several different softwares that we can change to. Like, I've got a couple folks here. It ranges from $10,000 on up, depending on what you want. Like I said, I'm not going to put this in my budget year for next year. Yeah, 26. So I just want to make a good decision on what kind of software we're going to use.
Is that $10,000 a year?
Um, no, sir. It's $10,000 just to change over on our current software. I mean, we'll keep the current software, but change the server so it'll be hosted at their facility and not here.
Okay.
So that's just keeping everything like it is. We do have like an old dinosaur software right now. It's not web-based or anything. When someone makes a payment online, it takes a few days for it to host on our side and online. There are softwares out there. As soon as someone makes a payment online, it is automatically posted on our system, so we can see that payment.
Mm-hmm.
Is that necessary?
It's not necessary, but the server, if it were to go down, we could not collect property taxes.
That's what I'm concerned about, is that server. It's on an old tape, which we just
backed up. So like I said before, when we had that power outage, we went with two weeks without collecting property taxes in our office. We still maintain the online payment option. So...
You were speaking on, on, online option. What would you say your percentage is on online collection?
That's a good question. I'll have to...
I am sure it's growing every year.
We have an e-check option. It's only $3. So a lot of people are using that for e-check instead of using their credit card, because it comes with convenience. They, but $3, saves them time to write a check, postage, and, you know, with the mail delivery system, it confirms they got a payment online for the e-check. I love that option myself. So a lot of people use that feature on our online payments.
That cuts down a lot of work for you guys.
It does. It does. It sure does.
What about on your mail-in and you in person, your percentages too, when you come up with the online percentage, try to come up with your mail-in and your in-person?
Sure. And it'll be just...
Probably in-person, a lot less than what it was five years ago, three years ago.
I'm sure. It's a lot quicker now. I've tried to got it streamlined, so it's just a quick process. We don't have to pull a bill now or anything. So usually during tax time, we're out the door at 5:00. There's no overtime or anything.
I think Thomas mentioned that about going to a cloud place as well.
Yes.
Everything's going online.
But I'm going to take my time figuring out what works best for our office. So I am planning to go visit other tax offices to see a live system in place. I've seen many demos, but I want to see it in action.
And demos promise you the world, don't they?
They, they do. They do. And I want to see it so I can take the payment and see how it works.
Well, and we, as a backing up on cloud, you, like Griffin said, you don't have to worry on the air, air conditioning system.
Correct.
And on your servers and all.
Correct.
Yep. You can eliminate that just about, yeah.
Do y'all have more training you need to do, or...
Um, we do have three conferences a year. We have Canada coming up in Athens. It doesn't require any overnight stay or anything. It's just, and actually, I say with another tax commissioner. So you just have to pay one way to get there and one way to remind them to see it, and then the conference fee. The other conferences are usually held at Jack Wilder. So of course, that has an expense. But I try to room with somebody to cut that as much as possible.
Any other questions?
The thing is...
About the same or lower? Look, here's another star. Her telephone has came down. These telephones, I'm telling you. You're going to see in a little bit.
Phones have gotten me crazy.
There, again, your online percentage, but your online stuff in your mail-in.
Well, they ain't paying per call.
The online process is really good. Yeah. They can print their receipt, look at their assessment notice. It's a great feature that we have for the online.
Well, to recap, the tax commissioners, we're going to go ahead and make sure we, the PEPSCO's in there. Audit fees is going to come out as a zero. The legal fees will come out as a zero, and the rest remains the same.
Yep.
Thank you. Is that good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
And I think even once you get that $12,000 PEPSCO in there, you're at or below what you were last year, so.
Sounds good.
You think?
That's it. Thank you.
All right.
I got a question for Arlene.
Ask her.
All right. You mentioned threw a curveball at us about that pay study earlier. What does that include? Does that just include pay studies from surrounding areas pay, or does that include like an efficiency study for the departments? It's both?
You can streamline it, you can do detail of that one. So they did the pay study. Yes, they go into surrounding counties and, and life populations and things like that. Then they, you do a detailed one. They go into each individual, and to, to, as part of that I was, but they go into each individual, talk to me, I'm asking what they do. They will model job descriptions, design the job description, and then they, and they'll be able to like pay grades.
Yeah.
And they credit where they recruit life positions together, and their salaries will be the same range because they're going on the next. It's very detailed. It's a very common system.
They lead the process.
And I talked with the chairman about it, and he actually reached out to ACCG, and the estimate for current was around $30,000 for surrounding counties. It's larger than the last. It cost them about $30,000 or $20,000 less.
I, I just wondered if it was a deal where they just go to surrounding counties and say, hey, they're paying this, y'all should be too, or if they're actually looking at the efficiency of the departments within our county, you know?
University of Georgia used to do it years ago.
Yeah.
I get emails all the time whenever surrounding counties are ready for, distant counties are doing pay studies. We are just doing it, whether it's Evergreen, Archer, Carleton, they'll say, would you share what you pay for this position, this position? And they look and see if they analyze that. Sometimes they'll ask for job descriptions, and they take everybody's account of mine and one employee's most efficient and best pay scale for, just as I can explain.
Thank you.
Moving along.
We, we got the tax assessor, which is on page 12. Next, Vicki, are you ready? Good deal. Good deal. Thank you, Vicki.
Hey, how are you?
Hey, Vicki.
Hi.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I don't know if you got any questions on the, on the first page, since...
First page, it all looks pretty consistent with last year and actuals from the year before, so.
Yeah. I, I know that, I know that we'll be making some adjustments because of when we find out what the health insurance is going to be and, and maybe be some other decisions concerning PEPSCO and something like that. But I don't really see anything much on the first page that...
Let me ask one question.
Sure.
All right. How many employees are you short right now?
Right now, there are five in my department.
And how many, how many, or you, I've seen you as advertising for...
Oh, how are we short?
I mean, short.
One, we need one more person.
So that would bring your total up to six?
Yes, sir.
Uh, another question. Last year, we done the deal with the drones that were supposed to fly over. Has that been done yet?
No, we haven't, we don't use drones. But are you talking about the aerial photography?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Sure.
Yeah.
Um, well, that usually goes through the GIS department and...
I think the way it was discussed last year, and I wasn't here for this, I was sitting in the back of the room, but it was to, to identify new construction or additions or...
Yes, we use that every day.
Mm-hmm.
And the one thing that I think she was going to add was the change finder, which is automated. I know it costs more, but basically, it'll alert us to any changes in the structures. It kind of draws a little outline around them, and then the next year, when they do the flight again, they'll know what's changed and what hasn't, and be able to alert us to those changes.
But is it every year for that? Did we pay for it, or it's just for one time for so many years?
Well, I believe that, I believe we were going to try to get it done each time there was a new flyover. And then we'll be alerted to those that we need to add, that maybe some of them may not have gotten builder's building permit. And if they're not right on the road, sometimes they're really hard to catch. You might catch them every few years, you know, when you go...
For clarification, we're not flying drones over people's house every day.
We are not flying drones.
She said we use that every day. Make sure we clarify that.
No.
We use the maps.
Aerial photography that is flown every other year, however often.
I mean, y'all the ones that voted to fly the drone over people's house, but...
There's nothing on that front page.
No.
Right there.
Is there not a satellite image that would handle this?
Well, that's what, there's, it's not a drone. It is aerial imagery. But the add-on that finds, uh, the new additions is what she referred to as change finder.
Yeah. It's an airplane.
Yes.
No drone. Yeah.
Yep. Uh, on the next page, professional. What are we doing with the professional line item?
Okay, so, um, for a professional, we have our Wing Gap appraisal software. Um, the Q Public web hosting site, uh, Tax Management Associates, which are personal property audits. Um, Georgia MLS, the CoreLogic, which is the Marshall and Swift valuation guides. Um, South Data, which do our personal property returns, um, our real property returns, our assessment notices. Um, and then we have a company called Crexie that, um, offers the commercial listings for us. Um, and we have the, uh, um, Georgia Association of Assessing Officials. Um, those are the items that are comprised the professional line item, uh, for forty-four thousand eight hundred sixty-five dollars.
All right. And say we're at thirty-five, five year before, and we're only at fourteen in February, so we'd still be on track to hit that thirty range. Are we, are we anticipating anything extra, or?
Well, um, yes. Last year, we didn't, all of our personal property audits were very late. So, we didn't get those bills in until later. Um, we had twenty thousand dollars scheduled, uh, budgeted for a year on that, and sometimes it doesn't quite make it into the same year it should. So, that's probably where that is. Um, we've switched companies now that we.
I think we did.
Yeah, we're, we're using a new company for the personal property audits, so, um.
Is that a set expense monthly for each of those programs, or is it?
No, it's not a monthly. Uh, it's, um, what it is, is we give them a certain amount of accounts per year, and they do, um, extensive audits on them to make sure that everything is returned how it should be. Um, and it's, it's just a, uh, we do pay it, not monthly though, just whenever we get a bill, because they finish them at different times. A lot of times, it takes a lot longer to get all the information from the taxpayer than, um, it might take, you know, several months to get one audit back, so.
Okay, and so, is, is there more than fifteen thousand dollars or twenty thousand dollars coming back after February for this fiscal year invoice-wise?
Yes, because a lot of these, um, line, uh, a lot of these items such as, uh, Wing Gap, um, Q Public, their, their bills don't come until just before, um, you know, our next fiscal year, so they usually come very late.
Okay, so you think we'll hit that forty-five thousand dollar number?
I think we'll probably be close to it.
Okay.
Well, it looked like to me, Vicki, that with last year was, actual was thirty-five thousand, and we've still got fourteen thousand. The, this actual this year, that's already over the forty-five.
Well, the thirty-five is from the previous fiscal year.
Yeah.
So, so what, then, we've only used fourteen thousand of the forty-five this year?
Mm-hmm.
And we're gonna have, you got that much more coming in?
Yes, sir. Um, most of these come in right at the very end of the fiscal year.
Can we reach out and try to get an idea of exactly what we've got outstanding?
Yeah, I can ask Renee for a, a printout, and then, yeah, I can get back.
Okay.
Of course, you're gonna, you'll wanna take out the legal fees, right?
Mm-hmm.
We're putting those in the department, so you won't, you won't be, you won't have, we're removing that, so.
Okay.
Right here. The only thing you have in technical is like a digital cameras, right? A digital camera?
Uh, digital cameras, and we need to replace two, uh, computers this year.
Yeah, I put the computers down here under the line item for computers.
Oh.
I put that under, I put your eighteen hundred dollars down here, the two computers.
Oh, okay.
Digital.
Then I've reduced the, uh, digital, the, uh, technical for two hundred for the cameras.
Okay.
Those.
Yeah, I care. Yeah.
Do we need?
Well, we got, we got a line item for computers, so that's what it.
We just leave the two hundred dollars in there probably.
Oh, so that's not in my.
It is. It is. You may have to put it down here somewhere, computers, eighteen hundred.
Then everything else down through there is about, say, we've gone up on uniforms, but we hadn't spent any. We got them.
Went up on general supplies and maintenance, and we're only at, or materials, whatever that is. We're only seventeen forty-nine.
They haven't changed anything else yet?
Actual, man.
Do y'all have some more?
You trend about twenty-two hundred.
On what?
On your general supplies.
Thirty-six eighty-seven.
Mm-hmm.
What they print this year, what they trended, should come out about twenty-two.
No, 'cause they, that, that seventeen forty-nine is from February.
Okay.
That's up through February.
Is that correct, Randy? Is this, is this book still the February actuals?
It is. That, that would be a trend of about twenty-six hundred dollars, but she, she, uh, used thirty-six hundred previous fiscal year, and she's at thirty-nine here. I don't know if the, is any, is there any, uh, any way to not, uh, kinda doubtful.
So, you use, that, that should be, the general supplies, you would probably use about that much more this year?
Thirty-nine hundred.
Well, I'm just, I was just going by how much everything has gone up, so I didn't want to, you know, have to go over what I budgeted.
And is that, I mean, is that just paper and pens and envelopes and?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Telephone's the same again. Y'all got anything else on that page?
Then, no.
Oh, yep. Got computers at the end.
That was, uh, you're saying you have to replace two computers, is that correct?
Yeah.
Who's, who's getting replaced? You may have to add more than that time.
Nancy and, uh, Jeter's computers need to be replaced. They're the last two.
Thomas is gonna work his way around to all the departments and make sure everybody's.
Oh, good.
Is, is gonna be up to, up to speed when it comes to these computers in twenty-six, but that it, it, it may be, it may go out to the technical line item. We, we haven't got that far yet, but we've got this in here for you anyway.
Yeah, okay.
So, the only thing as far as tax assessor's concerned with, we're just gonna reduce the legal fees at, at the zero.
Mm-hmm. And we're gonna check on the outstanding invoices for professional?
Professional, which you might give me a, give me, just give me an idea of a amount on that. That work, that work, good deal. All right. That was easy, wasn't it?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Vicki. You got any, any questions on that at all?
Where we're going with that?
Moving along.
We're gonna, uh, next up on the, is, uh, mapping in GIS, and that's on page fifteen, and Karen's here now. Before we get, get under that, Karen, can you give the commissioners a, an update on the, these flyovers and things like that that you got?
The change finder, I think, is what they're asking about.
Yeah.
Uh, Vicki's got the change finder. That's been, that's been delivered to us. Um, it's just a matter of, or finding time to, to work it now.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, yeah, that's been paid for and it's been delivered.
Okay.
Okay. And when, when are the flyovers?
We try and do flyovers every three years.
Okay.
Um, the ortho imagery is the flat, flat down. Um, we do that every three years through GMRC. They run a RFP.
Okay.
And then we do pictometry or, um, eagle view, which is the oblique imagery, and it gives you the angles, and you can view full three sixty around the buildings. And what it is, is it usually ends up, we've got ortho imagery one year, and then before that comes up, then pictometry runs. So, we really have a really good view of accurate current imagery.
Bet you love getting that, don't you?
It helps.
I bet it does. I bet it does. I guess the, the commissioners are probably, although we're not looking at the, you know, like payroll and things and the benefits as usual, because we still gotta get a, get a amount on the health insurance.
I don't have anything on that anyways.
You might wanna elaborate here on the professional line items and the, and the, and the technical that you have, if you don't mind.
Uh, the professional, um, line item, that twenty-one, one seventy-three, I just got the invoice today, and that is for eagle view. Uh, when eagle view does the flyover, uh, they allow us to pay in three-year increments, so this is one of the, those increments. Um, the.
And that, and this, this map right here?
This, this will be, um, the eagle view oblique imagery and the flyover for the ortho imagery, um, that were. Yeah, I mean, it, it may come through, it may not. It depends on how many counties are participating.
The, the ortho imagery is just the straight down, like you see on Q Public, correct? What, when's the last time we had that done?
We had that done in twenty-three.
Okay.
And this will be for twenty-six, so that's, that's our three-year mark.
Yeah, for three years.
Yeah, what you call it, eagle view?
You don't have to.
No, eagle view is the, is the angled imagery. Um, we don't know who the vendor's gonna be for the ortho imagery.
What do we use the eagle view for?
It's the, um, we have online access, and you can view the, um, the angles of the buildings, so you can see what's around the buildings. Um, and.
Is, is there a benefit to it, I guess, what I'm asking?
Yes, yes. We have, um, we have three inch in the cities, which means we get a much closer view of the buildings. And then, you know, in the rural, more rural areas, it's nine inch, and sometimes we could use the three inch, but, um.
What, what are we using it to do?
Uh, they do use it for, um.
That we can't do with the ortho.
Um, pre, uh, pre-field check. Um, sometimes they won't even have to go out to the field if they can use the imagery and get a good look at a building. Um, or, you know, just to orientate themselves before they go out there to see what's going on. Uh, the flat view is, um, it's more like a layer on a map.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because when you do the angles of the building, it's a little bit more distorted, um, for map viewing. But, um, everybody's got online access to the Connect Explorer. Um, it has all of our, our data. It has our roads, our water lines, our sewer lines, our hydrants, address points, parcel lines, so they have an access to all of the data and to look at online. They, they don't really have to come to me unless they need something more specific.
Okay.
Well, why have, we have no, had no expenses in the professionals this year?
Well, we tried to, we tried to do ortho imagery for twenty-five, um, the last time we did the budget, but there were not enough counties that participated, so we didn't do it.
So, we hadn't used anything?
Correct.
And we've got, but we've got ortho that was completed in twenty-three, correct?
Correct.
So, that's basically nineteen thousand dollars to update three years' worth of whatever's been built or cleared. And I don't know if that's absolutely necessary expense this go around, but.
It's very useful to the tax assessors, um, even the mapping depart, um, not the mapping department, the water department, um, fire service. In nine-one-one.
How much of your legal building would you catch, uh, nineteen thousand dollars?
Well, I mean, that's, the change finder is more of what does that, this isn't even the change finder stuff, but.
But do we need thirty-nine, nine?
But is this overlapping?
If, if we do the ortho, correct me if I'm wrong, but that oblique imagery, that's already been completed, and we're still making a payment on it, correct?
Correct. We did the, um, and I wanna say twenty-four is when we did the, um, oblique imagery.
Yep. Yeah, that's what it's got, twenty-twenty-four, so is this, this would be the second or third payment, this last payment on it?
I think there's one more year, one more year of payment, and then we'll have the option to re-up for another flight.
So, we have to spend that twenty-one, one seventy-three, 'cause that's.
That's already obligated, yes.
So, the, the discretionary amount is at eighteen-eight-eleven for the, for the new straight-down flat imagery?
But is it not overlapping your change finder, or?
Change finder is totally separate from the imagery. Change finder takes the building footprint, and then, and then you're compared to old and new, and you can see what's been missed, what's been added on to, but the imagery, you have the oblique imagery is a couple of years either ahead or behind the ortho. And then now we're due for ortho.
And stuff, stuff you're talking about now, you've used by their tax assessors too, correct?
Yes, yes.
And it cuts down a lot of legwork with them, so.
Yeah, Tracy uses a lot in personal property.
Less employees.
Did we, did we, was we able to cut any employees by doing this?
Well, then, she don't have five in the whole department. She's one short, so.
Yeah, one short now.
Eh, if we do this, will she stay with five employees?
Should be able to.
We already do.
I don't think it makes that big a difference.
Need that many employees, is that what you're saying?
Pretty much.
That'd be a question for her, but.
Yeah, that, Vicki. Cause if we can do this and save an employee, then we need to do it.
And, and save salary.
An additional employee would help her have the time to do the change finder, which could help the county find revenue.
Well, that's one thing that technology is for. To back up their findings, or to help them find stuff. This is not fair for us, wanna pay it, and somebody else is not getting by with it.
Yeah.
So, we can have a little more discussion on the ortho. The twenty-one's a given. It's there for sure.
Yeah.
All right, and then seems like all the way down through there stayed about the same until you get to professional. So, what have we got?
Is that the same thing with technology and travel now when we have it?
Oh, the professionals, yeah. Then, uh, technical, what was, what is the technical?
Those are our licensings for our mapping software.
Okay, and I guess those just hadn't hit as of February.
Yeah, it'll, it'll probably be, um, May sometime.
Okay.
A lot of this stuff comes at the end of about a fiscal year.
Mm-hmm.
Right at the end. That's what, it doesn't show anything, you know, for us, and that's why I always question whether there is something that, yeah.
Y'all got any other questions on that first page?
No.
Training supplies. Uh, computers. I say we've got a line item, but no requested thing there. We good on computers?
No, sir. Y'all just got.
We got the computers and the servers and all that.
And server, yes.
I don't guess that's even been installed yet, has it?
Uh, May seventh is our, is our date.
Good deal. He's up.
Actually, um, TKS was able to figure out, um, temporary fix to my computer, so it stopped, um.
It kept on running on.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
They, they figured something out, so now it doesn't shut down on me anymore.
Yeah. Well, that's good.
Yeah, it's real good. Yeah, it's real good.
So can we send that expensive new one back?
Yeah.
What's that?
So can we send that expensive new one back?
No, sir.
It'd start tearing up again.
Yeah. I believe she might've been unplugging it.
If you, if you ever got time, any of y'all would always go over to her office and let, ask her a question about your property. I mean, she can show you everything about it in just a matter of seconds. It's, it's very interesting what she does over there. It's damn real. Listen, they do a great job. They do a great job.
Y'all got anything else? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Sam. It's like we're not changing anything on this stuff.
I like it.
I do, too.
We can do that.
Let's have a...
Let's have a...
Acre.
You wanna learn the ABCs of the law quick?
Y'all care about acres?
Gimme an acre.
Uh, ABCs on them.
Bo's gonna teach me how to spell, too.
Yeah. ABCs.
Who's waiting on next?
We got equals, Board of Equal Advisors up there next, but I guess this...
How'd we go from 2,200 to 4,900?
Uh, it just, it just depends on how often they're used. So, you know, like the year before is 2172, now we're at 4,910.
But that's just on the number of cases that they have.
That's right. That's right. So it's, it's sort of a, um, hard thing to pin down, really.
Yeah. Just means we're gonna have to cut 2,800 off somebody else.
It's, it's, uh, whether you wanna leave it, maintain it five or... Bring it down.
Well, if they're already negative, I don't see how we can't.
I'd say that's small enough. We can bring it back down. Hope we have a good year. If we don't, we've got it in contingency.
You, you can, you can do that. You can...
You know, reduce it to 2,500 then?
That's what I think.
2,500?
Cause that won't wreck contingency if it happens, but that's 2,500 less we gotta collect in property taxes, so...
Yeah.
Well, I, I will, uh, reduce that 2,500 and reduce the social security down to 192.
Who's that next?
So we, they got the 2,500 and the social security be 192. Yeah, the courthouse, got the courthouse on page 18.
They're not coming.
I wanna make another star.
What?
Trash pickup, garbage pickup has not changed here, and that'll be important later. All right. On the building maintenance, I see we're up on it. What are we, we expecting anything, or?
We're not expecting anything. It just, uh, like, um, the previous year, we spent 32,000. We budgeted 26, we're already at 21 now. You never know what, it, it entails everything. It could be alarm systems, the camera systems, uh, just any and everything that could go wrong at the courthouse. Uh, fire alarms, uh, it, it's a lot of maintenance on the different heating and air units over at the courthouse. And one of these days, you might be prepared to have to replace it, but that would be a, definitely a capital expenditure there.
That thing's got a cooling tower over there.
We've got, you got elevator inspections and reports over there. You've also got that x-ray machine that you, you have to get maintenance, maintain over at the courthouse. 32,000 would be, I'd be tickled to death to maintain it at 32,000.
And we spent that the year before.
Wouldn't hurt if I didn't have a bath, starting with...
Mm-huh. All right, um, vehicle and equipment. They ain't got a vehicle, do they?
No, we, the, the, the vehicle, the, the equipment that we, the, the only one that goes over there is just the janitorial ladies, which is in different, different department.
Um, general supplies, cleaning supplies.
Where's the office equipment?
Water.
It's a copy machine. And we could possibly maybe do away with that. I'm gonna check in. I was talking to the chairman about that. That's that, that copy machine that's sitting out in front of the, uh, securities checkpoint. And I'm not so sure that they use it that often, and, um, we may be able to do away with that or see if another department actually wants it, to be honest with you. It's a good machine, they just don't, it's not in use.
Well, if, if they're not using it and our other departments are operating without it, get rid of it and not pay for it.
You know, I don't know whether, I don't know whether one of the judges is gonna need the different, the other one, that would be in one of their chambers. But it's sitting out there in the lobby area is, uh, is, is of little use to the deputies. Might basically in the way as well.
Well, let's do away with that some again.
We'll, we'll, I'll check on that and see where, where we might wanna use it. But it is costing you 1,620 dollars a year.
Well, if they're not using it, we don't need it.
Um, propane, I sees up a little. We're, we're getting quote bids on that right now, aren't we?
We are. Well, matter of fact, it's this week, I believe, bids on the, on the propane.
So that could change a little bit, hopefully in the right direction.
Uh, electricity, I gotta, I gotta work in a figure for that. I can see if, we didn't have, we deployed, we didn't place anything in there and I would see...
Now, I know rates have gone up a little bit on electricity, but I feel like we might be leaving the air conditioner too low in a lot of these places.
The trend, the trend on power bill here is running 50,000 dollars. As of through February.
But they spent 42.5 last year.
Mm-hmm.
Hard to imagine rates went up 8,000 dollars.
I don't know. There's, it's, it's, they, they've increased across the board a lot.
That's Georgia Power, too.
That's the, yes, sir.
Georgia Power has went up astronomically.
Now, on the other page up here, when we get over another page, we've got energy and it says gasoline and diesel, 53,000 dollars?
Oh, that's where I got it. I put 53,000 dollars. That's, that's, that's electricity.
All right, so that needs to go back over on the electricity.
I agree.
That's a lot of fuel there, ain't it?
I, I, I agree with that. I got, I got it one line item down. Do you wanna maintain it at that, or?
Nope. I'll turn the air off.
The, the, the trend is 50, but we could bring it down to, we could bring it down 3,000 dollars.
Recool.
But...
Yeah, let's do that.
Yes, yes.
Let's, let's reach out to Georgia Power, too, cause I know they'll come out and do a lot of efficiency studies for nothing.
Yeah.
And let's see if we can figure out why we're using sedagumutra, if we got holes in the windows or...
Has it got LED lights through that building, too?
And I know a lot of times you can get grants to do LED...
I think it's got some LED lights. I'm not sure whether the whole courthouse has LED lights.
Yeah, there's your money.
Yeah, let's, let's make a note to do an efficiency study on, on all our buildings, if, if that's something that Georgia Power or the power company, whoever is responsible will do it.
And that'd be a fraction of paying back for that SK debacle, so...
Recap it, Mr. ...
The small, the small equipment is the postage machine over there. Get me those. Uh, the recap on the courthouse is the vehicle equipment is zero. The office equipment lease, we'll double check on that copy machine. Well, the energy, electricity will, will, uh, maintain it at 50,000. And then the, uh, gasoline will be zero.
Small equipment, what is that?
Postage, postage machine. It runs the same amount as it does here at the annex. We got one at the annex in the courthouse.
Looks like a spaceship. All right.
Next, the next apartment is the annex building, which is on page 20. And that's where we're gonna put the legal fees.
We're putting what legal fees?
Legal fees.
Oh, yeah.
All right. One thing I got marked here.
Okay.
Is the social security, it's up a lot, but none of the salary or insurance or any of that other stuff is up. Is that...
You see the amount over here, 3,873?
Mm-huh.
That's, that's what it, that's probably, that's what it should be, 3,870. We'll maintain it the same.
Just saved y'all 2,000 dollars.
Looks like probably group insurance got them tied in with the custodial. Good catch.
Building maintenance, I see we were way over last year anyways.
I just wanna ask a question about where it's got the PepsiCo County base match. Why is there 10 dollars there? What, what's going on there?
Just kept, just to have, keep the department line, line item open.
Okay, okay.
Legal fees were up some because we're pulling it out of all the other departments, and we're up some because we're gonna have a lawsuit, or we're in a lawsuit over the zoning deal. I mean, we're gonna have some legal fees this year.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a big jump.
Garbage pickup, another star. We've gone down a little bit, and that'll be important again a little bit. Building maintenance about the same. And really, I think we might be under budgeted on building maintenance just by looking at what we've been spending.
I know it. You'll, you'll be, you'll be lucky to get, to get by with that. But you never know, uh, each year is...
Maybe we've got it all fixed now.
The previous year was at 15, was at 15,000, almost 16,000 dollars. I mean, you could, we might, we may maintain the, I don't, I'm not sure about that one. You might, you might wanna... 9,500 is, seems like a pretty small amount for the entire building.
There it is.
We got a dollar left in the insurance. I hope you don't...
The, uh, the, the building maintenance, the trend runs about 11,000 dollars.
That's on the real building.
You wanna leave it at that, or you wanna leave it at 95, or go to 11?
Runs up 12.
Run up to 12.
I was thinking 12.
Okay.
Yeah.
I feel more, I'd feel more comfortable at 12 anyway.
I don't wanna, if we know we're gonna spend more than that, we don't need to write it down small, so...
No, no. The insurance, other than employee benefits, what are, is that liability insurance?
Liability?
Have we shot that recently?
We're, we're with ACCG right now, correct?
Yeah.
They beat everybody unreal.
Yeah.
And that's not just for this building, correct?
No.
No, that's all the liability.
Everything.
That sheriff's office cars, I mean, that's everything. They quit building buildings.
Yeah, hurt.
Next page.
Have we, have we looked at the, up, up in the, the values of the buildings, the, when it last time, because they've been...
That's...
They do that.
Best of... General supplies, that seems to be a more accurate number than what was on there last year. It's at 1,500 instead of 900.
It is.
Cleaning supplies, that seems to be more accurate. I think we've had it under budgeted. It's the electricity.
That's pretty much just based on trend there.
But we're just a little bit, we're, we, our actual last year was 38.5, and we're at 42 for trend.
Mm-hmm.
And this is a lot bigger building than that courthouse.
You think it's more efficient?
It may be. It's newer. That may be one thing we're looking at, or maybe we just, no, I know for a fact, y'all don't turn the air on around here, so... It's always hot in there. Good with that. Telephone, what do we got going on there? Is the telephone expense wrapped into the commissioner's budget?
It is.
Okay, so... And small equipment's the postage machine, right?
Is posted, that's correct.
Y'all got any other questions?
No.
Move it along.
The, the, so to do a recap on the annex building, we're gonna, social security, we're gonna change that to 3,873. That's 3,873 dollars. The building maintenance is 12,000 dollars. And of course, telephone still remains, remains at zero.
Works for me.
We can go on to the coroner if you like.
Trying to get to it. I got the big book over here. There we go.
Where's he at, Randy?
Page 39.
Page, yeah, page 39.
He not coming?
He's not coming, no, sir.
We doing the coroner?
Yeah.
It all looks about carbon copy from last year.
Pretty creepy.
Medical care fees, I see that's up a hair.
Yeah, that's, that's just the transport.
Now, he did, um...
I think they may have gone up on him a little bit.
What, they did, but he came in last week. He's found a new company. It's a little bit cheaper, so we might be able to pull that back down, so... So I'd rather, I'd rather put that back at that 6,600. He was 62.45 actual last year. And he's up a little bit as of February this year, but that's not, it's not gonna be the same every month, you know?
Mm-mm.
I'd rather stay at 66. Like I say, that's another one of those that's small enough that won't kill contingency, but that's less we got a tax for. Tires and tubes, they don't have anything there.
I think he's, I think according to him, he's good on that right now. But, I mean, you could always have a, have a blowout. You could, you have to, yeah, get it for flat.
Yeah, and one tire go flat, we gonna need something.
I think there needs, needs to get.
Got 250 in vehicle and equipment.
250?
Or he had 400. I got 250.
Do, do, do you want to leave the tires and tubes, any, anything in there?
I will put Tyler's other 150 dollars.
Yeah, we'll spread it back out.
Okay. And what about the vehicle and equipment?
We'll do 150 tires and two, 250 vehicle and equipment, and that gets him what he needs.
Hopefully.
Mm-huh.
Now, Mark came in as well. Uh, he, he, he suggested that the travel, which would be for, you know, it'd be him and Brian and Beth. It would be, should be more in line at, you probably got 42. He said it should be more in line with 48.63 and education and training down to 1,080.
I gotta grab something off my desk, be right back.
He got two assistants, right? He got his self and two assistants.
Well, he's got, he's got himself and Mark still available and Beth, so there's, there's actually three for travel and three for education and training.
Beth and him and who else?
Mark, he said.
Mark, no.
The old.
What do we need him for?
I don't think we do.
I don't.
We've always got, uh...
We've always got, right, with two.
With two.
But, I mean, that's what, that's what they, that's what they, he was suggesting, yeah. Mark on board, Beth and himself.
I would, maybe...
I'd say just go back to him and Beth, that's what should have been there.
The, the chairman, you may, you may have a little bit of, have you, has he talked with you, the coroner?
On...
On maintaining Mark, or doing away with him, as far as?
Hadn't talked a whole lot about that, I had something printed off, I'm not sure that we are supposed to have as many deputy coroners as we do have, so I need to look into that.
That's what...
We've always had two.
We, yeah, but always had a coroner and one, right?
Yeah.
One.
Mm-hmm.
Not a second.
We need to have one.
No, let's leave it like Keith said, with him and Beth.
And I had that printed off, and I don't know where it's going to.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll need to get, I'll need to get back with him on that, on the, that would, that would, that would affect the travel, and also the education and training, that would affect both.
Yeah. Everything else down through there looks about, right, telephone's gone down again, star of that.
So I'm slapping a question mark on travel and education, until you get with him and let us know, finalize it.
Yeah, so is, are all the other line items look okay?
Yep.
So as far as recapping the coroner, you're gonna be medical care fees, bring them down to sixty-six hundred dollars, add a hundred and fifty for tires and tubes, vehicle and equipment, two fifty. We'll double check on the travel, double check on the education and training, and the rest of the department looks good.
Yep.
Uh, is Logan here?
Who?
Logan, he's, I just saw him walk back through there.
Code enforcement and...
How about recycling, he didn't know?
He is recycling, he'd be here for recycling as well.
Who's that?
Logan.
Where, is he on here, calling?
Yeah. I should have asked her.
But she could be saying...
Her on duty. Whenever Arlene said she was sending them up to Larwood, no, I should have asked her, is she using anything with Avita? Since we're giving money there.
Mm-hmm.
We need to pull out from there, and look at other options.
Just have to get some other options. Roads is coming at one, right?
Uh, roads, that's correct.
Roads at one, and elections at one fifteen?
Uh, that's correct.
And then we go on to executive session at two.
Yes, correct.
Wouldn't you agree?
He's gone on the call. Well, we can move on to the health department, Avita, defects.
Right number.
Yep.
I'm skipping, apparently, what page we at?
It'd be the next one after the...
We got, the health department's on page sixty-two.
Are we going to the health department?
Yeah.
We're skipping a couple.
Right now.
Sixty-two.
We were way off, Chris.
The health department.
Recycling.
Mm-hmm.
We skipped recycling.
Well, Logan, Logan will be involved, and Logan will do recycling.
Logan will?
Logan will. The health department did not ask for any more, or any, or any less than the, than the previous year, they're, they're looking at a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
They're, that big line item, the health department budget, that was at one-twenty, is that just paid out in installments, or how's that?
It is. They, normally we pay it, the, the Avita at one time, which is the fifteen-four, um, which you, you were just mentioning about what Arlene was inquiring about, um, I'm not, I'm not sure what all Avita would, has supplied to the county, the, the, what Arlene was talking, it's more of a, is a, more of a counseling thing, I believe, is what, what she was talking about. I think Avita goes more, or supposedly supposed to go, provide more to the type of service than just that, but, um... But they, they, but they're still, they're still asking for fifteen-four, same as they did last year.
Because it, it looks like on the mind that they're already, they don't have but a hundred and thirty-three dollars left for this year, and it's only half a year through February.
Well, we're, 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 we're taking it off each month.
So, so, we got enough?
So, they'll, they'll, they'll end up with a collecting fifteen thousand, four hundred dollars. Now, who is, uh, uh, someone, I'm not sure who's attached to the board, who's a board member?
Me and Carol Williams, well, I was, I'm off of it now.
You're off?
My term ran in and out.
You, you may know more about what they supposedly supposed to provide, and...
Well, the services they are, they supposedly, that, that was my argument with them, they were providing services, they said, at, through Homer Methodist, had everybody going up there, but then they would reroute them to either Clarksville or Rayburn County to see somebody, and my argument was...
How do we get there?
Eighty, eighty percent of these people who need help, they don't have transportation.
That's correct, that's right.
They don't have transportation, so why are we doing this with them if our people are not getting serviced, that's my argument.
Is there another option?
And i- if Keith and Danny remembers it before y'all come on board, she get, she come in front of us, and I drilled her pretty hard on that.
Yep.
And she could not give me an answer, her alternative was, you need to build us a building, like Rayburn County has.
That was the health department?
No.
No.
Avita.
Avita, that...
The mental and the...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, oh. But does, Jeannie, does, our new people that relocated down on four forty-one, do they offer any services like that?
Yeah.
The, the line item, so Arlene's other option she had was still fifteen-four, correct, Randy? Didn't you say Arlene had another option for...
No, I, I was...
No, she's using that up under.
The, Arlene was, I think the, 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 the type of services that she can get for employees or whatnot, is more like a, a counseling situation.
Up at Larwood, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. At this point, I don't feel comfortable cutting a dime out of any more health, until we find a difference.
No, 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 I'm saying we need to find something.
Make sure we've got the most efficient.
Most efficient for our people, our citizens and employees and all.
Getting this, this service, and if they're sending them somewhere else, and we're, we're not...
And this, this isn't just employees here, this is...
This is, this is citizens.
So why don't we have the, whoever's over the health department come in and discuss this with...
That's what we named Dave, just kind of sit down with them and see what kind of options there are.
Yep.
My understanding of Vita has a new person running it now, so...
Maybe it's...
Yeah.
And maybe it does great things, we just, you know...
But my concern is the citizens that needs help.
That's what we're doing.
Eighty percent of them doesn't have transportation. It's hard enough for them to get to the Methodist church a lot of times, much less look at them and say, you need to go, cause I know one gentleman who has went there three or four times, and they've told him...
Well, maybe there's a service of the...
You need to go. Cause, cause hey, their, their agenda was already set when you walked in.
You might have been bad for their mental health.
I probably was, I'm sorry, cause I asked a lot of questions, I'm sorry. Huh?
Alright, so I think I asked enough on the health department.
To look after your constituents and ask questions, am I correct?
Yep.
Arlene heard her name mentioned, she come running.
I said my name.
Tell her.
I went to a minister, go get Charles something, so I'll be back by one o'clock.
You gonna, you gonna do that now?
I think so, because I need to go take her.
Okay.
I moved recess until twelve fifty.
I second that.
Got a motion and second, any discussion?
Nope.
Keith?
Ah.
Ah. We'll be back.
I might have to, I can go back to the store for a little while. Until when? Them suckers good, ain't they?
They are good.
You can learn, learn the young of that, ABCs with them.
I guarantee you, the last thing my young'un's gonna do with a bag of cookies is read them.
Read, read ABCs.
Y'all want some chocolate covered acres?
Or some, look, or some ABC cookies, I'm learning him his ABCs all over again.
Definitely.
You're teaching.
Now, now Bo put these in the bag, says a bunch of extra letters.
I am teaching him.
I'm teaching.
Chris, I need you to appreciate that.
Yeah.
I said Bo put these in the bag, there's a bunch of extra letters.